Things on our end. And. All right, George, you're all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're calling to order the Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals Thursday, March 16, 2023, meeting being held hybrid in the Select Board Hearing Room at Town Hall and remote via Zoom. The Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. As I said, this is both in person in the hearing boardroom and via Zoom. The phone dial-in and voice Zoom can be found on the town's Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals website. We have a packed agenda this evening, so although we are going to hear from everyone, we ask that you keep your comments targeted, focused, and as quick as you can be committed. Very much with that, we will call the first application of Colin J. Reedy and Kimberly Divine Reedy, 27 Pineview Drive, Citrus, Mass., requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, Section 6, and Sections 8, 10.2B, and 476F of the Citrus zoning bylaw and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to construction and attached accessory dwelling unit by altering a portion of the existing dwelling and constructing two separate on-story additions at 27 Pineview Drive, Citrus, Mass. 02066, and increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Okay, Mr. Meravito, your name, address for the record. Oh, you are muted, sir.
No, he's not.
Can we turn up the volume because we cannot hear him?
No, we don't hear you yet, Paul there. Paul, nothing yet.
You are, he is not technically muted. Do you need to switch microphones perhaps? No.
Still nothing, Paul.
Oh, no, we still cannot hear you, sir. Nope. Be patient, just a couple more minutes for technical issues.
Paul, as usual, you can dial in on that phone number and I can get you.
Right.
Just look at that agenda.
Yeah, if you need to dial on the phone. Is okay as well. Yep, we can. All right.
I agree.
Yeah.
That is going on here.
Yep.
You can go a second.
Sorry, it's not on this, it's, it's not on the send.
As I was saying, can you just go to the second half of the question?
All right, Paul, Paul, we're gonna, we're gonna go to the next application temporarily. We will return to you in a second. Um, in the hopes that you'll be able to resolve the technical issue, unless revised. Can we hear you?
No, Paul, 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 you're definitely gonna have to dial in. Just dial in.
All right, use the dial-in number, please. All right, so we will table the first application. We will call the second application of William Guilford, 224 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Citrus, Mass. 02066, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Sections 620.3 and 812 of the Citrus zoning bylaw and/or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow for the construction of an addition to the existing nonperformant single-family dwelling located at 224 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Citrus, Mass., and increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. The address for the record, please.
Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse Engineering, representative of property owner, William Guilford, properties 224 CJC Highway. We're seeking a special permit in accordance with Section 810.2 and a finding per Mass. General Act, Chapter 48, Section 6 to allow, in addition to their single-family home, this is located in the R1 zoning district. The lot itself is 50,641 square feet in size, all of which is upland land area. The existing home was built in 1984. It's approximately 2,668 square feet. The nonconformity here is with respect to the front yard setback. It exists at 79.2 feet where 100 feet is required on Chief Justice Cushing Highway. The proposal is to add a new garage with living space above the garage. It would bring the gross floor area to 4,430 square feet, represents a 66% increase. The new garage and room above it are closer to CJC Highway. They propose to the distance of 50.2 feet. While it is closer, it does maintain a 50-foot vegetated buffer to Route 3A. It is in keeping with adjacent properties. The directly adjacent property is the KFC pool, which is cleared essentially from the street all the way back to the pool. We feel it would have minimal impacts proposed, the setbacks, and that the board can grant that it would not be substantially detrimental. I have three pictures of the site. The first one here, you can see our hyacinth through the woods right here. You can see the KFC pool property immediately next door. This is standing on 3A looking directly at the site currently. You can see the house very slightly through the woods. And there's a third photo in there as well.
And there's no intention to get rid of the vegetated buffer?
No, they, they do wanna maintain a pretty healthy vegetated buffer there under so-so.
Let me ask a question. Have you looked at, other than the KFC pool, at some of the other homes that would be otherwise subject to the 100-foot setback? And are, how, approximately, how close are they, are they to the street?
Sure. Right next to us on the southern side, as you head toward Marshfield.
Yep.
Essentially, there's a brand-new house that was built there just two years ago.
Yep.
That complies with the 100-foot setback because it is brand-new.
Yeah.
Adjacent to that is a house that was built around the same era as this one. That one's approximately 75 feet back off the lot itself.
I think it's very clear, the request seems to be very clear. Questions from the board at this point. Now can you go back to the board?
Can we require that that vegetated buffer be maintained in perpetuity? Being that we've already said that we don't want these things closer than 100. He's coming closer than the current 79. Can we require that vegetated buffer be de-required, de-required?
I don't know if we can require it as a condition, as a condition and look to grant the permit. We can absolutely require that. That a vegetated bus, significant vegetated bus will be maintained.
W L.
Would be in favor of that?
Just making a note.
I would think anyone living there would also.
I agree. I think people would want that.
It's okay on our side.
Yeah. Right, I, I think, I think, you know, the, the reason you're going out that way and, uh, are in different ways because you sort of passed it. And.
I should know this. Should I know this? What's the zone over there?
It's R1, though.
It's R1, yeah, I mean, the lot's plenty big enough. It's just where everything else is.
I just didn't know if there was a place also that somebody could buy, just buy that and put up a big building 50, 50, 50, just like I was saying.
Yeah, but it wouldn't, it would be a business overlay. It's not a, it's a condition for residential. So, all right, so I'm good with that. Everybody on the board, I mean, it's clear, the request. Bob, anything that we're missing? Anything you would like to comment on, circle.
I'm really afraid I have to be the bridge on this one.
That's fine.
And that's not my typical or comfortable role. But let me read you from zoning Section 818 to 810.2A. Yep. And this is basically, well, either A or B, it's the same word. Provided that any repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change itself exceeds 20%, and we know that that's why, you know, the zoning relief has been requested. But prior to that, they're saying that the proposed repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change shall meet all dimensional requirements for front side and rear setbacks and maximum amount. That's repeated in Section A and Section B. I frankly think that we're in danger of setting a precedent here that you might wanna just really think hard about. I know the board's granted many times zoning relief that did not meet the setback requirements, but that did not increase the existing nonconformity.
Correct.
Now, this would be creating, in my mind, a new nonconformity.
Well.
Or.
It increases. So, I, I agree with your assessment that it increases an existing nonconformity. The question, I think, there, we'll open it up to comments from here, is, is that, is that an increase substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, right? That's our test, right? It, it either creates, it creates no new nonconformities, right? That's it, and because there's an existing one, it's not a brand-new one, the same one. But it intensifies an existing nonconformity. And our test has historically been whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. On that issue, and whatever else the audience, so to speak, the people in the room would like to comment on, I am happy to hear on it, and I think we need to hear on it. But I think Bob makes a very good point. Any comments from the room on this? Any comments from Zoom?
No one has been here, Reedy.
Okay. So, again, I think the, the ask is clear on this. And I think Bob has done a great job of explaining to us what the issue is, which is there's an existing nonconformity, and that nonconformity is being intensified, right? Because it is, the front yard setback is decreasing from 79 feet, 50 feet where 100 feet wood is required on Chief Justice Cushing. 30 feet's required in the R1 zoning district.
Can I ask a question? Isn't the 20%, it is the 20%, isn't it? If there were less than 20%. Right, Bob?
I would say if it was less than 20%, it would still have to come before.
I'm, I'm sorry, not if it's.
If it's under 20%, it can be permitted directly.
From the building.
From the building.
Even if it's going closer, even if it's.
No, 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 no. Please, reading the wording in that section, if it doesn't meet setback requirements, then no, it can't be permitted directly, but no matter what, per se, which you got.
And, and that's really not the requirement, that's not the type of nonstatability that we're at.
Yeah.
So, that's really not the issue. I think, I think Bob has put his finger on the issue. That is the question. And, and that is part of the reason I asked, what is the setback on some of these other homes that are nearby Chief Justice Cushing, right? I'm not suggesting necessarily that you do sort of an average front yard setback analysis. But because of the increase or the decrease in the front yard setback, right? It's a question, right? Is this or is this not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? We don't have any evidence one way or the other. I, I am of the opinion it is probably not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, especially if it's screened, right, as a condition. But that's my opinion. Correct. So, Morse, do you have anything more to add?
No, we did, we did look at the average front yard setback to see if that would help us, but that only extends out 200 feet on the other side. There's a lot of frontage between the lots up here. It didn't help us per se. But I mean, up and down 3A, there are some buildings that are closer to 3A with significantly less vegetation. We would absolutely maintain a vegetated buffer there. That's our intent and a condition to that effect. I think would be a good finding.
It's currently the closest house just in that area, 23A. If you go down towards Kennedy's, you get that old antique houses, it's really.
Yeah, well, if you go down by Kennedy's and further down, a lot of the houses are much closer than the 100 feet for sure.
Yeah.
And some of them.
Smaller, smaller lots.
Smaller lots, correct.
Yeah, this location was, was chosen because that side of the house, there's an existing carport there.
Yep.
So, the first floor layout essentially is laid out to have access to the carport. So, this is a two-car garage on the first floor and then living space above it. On the other side of the house is where the current septic system is existing and proposed to be rebuilt, is on the right-hand side of the house as you look at it.
I would assume that little bump out is a bulkhead.
That's correct.
If you spun the garage around to the backside of the house. Of course, it comes to mind. I'm not there. I tend to, I tend to side with the expert. Yeah. We have a requirement, these things have to be 100 feet. He's already aiming, and he's proposed less.
Arguably significantly less.
Yes. I would like to, you know, there are alternatives. Like I said, you can put that on the back of the house and maintain the same feet. There are alternatives to the design and still kind of accomplish the same thing. I would lean towards back for the second try in a different location and not far.
Any questions from the board?
What can be on this side? For real, the stuff.
Did you say you're redoing it anyways, the septic?
We are redoing the septic. That's, uh.
In the same location?
Correct.
Correct.
You know, looking at going off the back of the house, again, that property line to the north of us is the KFC pool parking lot as well as the pool itself. So, we'd like to maintain at the top of the, the plan, if you're looking at the plan there.
Right.
You know, we'd like to keep a, a pretty vegetated buffer to that neighbor as well.
Sure.
So, if you put the garage off the back of the house, you know, you'd have to get a driveway around the left side of the house where the garage is currently proposed, you know? So, that would, that would affect the vegetated buffer to 3A a little bit more, essentially. And it would affect certainly the vegetated buffer to the neighbor. Just seemed like the, the appropriate location.
Can I respectfully disagree with that?
Absolutely.
Only because I'm seeing the driveway coming straight up already.
And I've read this thing like five times.
Yep.
And I can find a way around it, that's why, so. It seems pretty clear. It seems pretty clear, we, that it's, should not be that. Should not be closer. Based on what it was prior to the. I don't know, someone else can read it and find another thing, but.
I, I think, I think it's a, it's a fair, it's a fair interpretation, right?
Yeah.
We are intensifying an existing nonconformity at this point.
Right.
The question is, what is the test? I'm not arguable or illiterate. The question is, can that be accomplished? And is the test really whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? Or is it not?
I would say it's not. Only concern, I would say, is setting a precedent, but does that condition? I mean, if someone came before us and said, if it was 50 and went to 20, it's a whole different discussion, right? But that, I wouldn't consider that a similar scenario to this.
Right. There, in the, in the bylaw, there is a requirement for a 50-foot vegetated buffer along Route 3A as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's specifically why we chose not to go into that 50-foot buffer.
Right.
To go to 20 feet, to your point, would require or create a new nonconformity. So, we're, we are respecting that.
The only thing that's still on me, though, is I do think there's other options. I'm comfortable personally with that condition to alleviate any concerns of setting a precedent, but have been fully exhausted. I mean, you're gaining parking and living space if you did a detached garage and still did an addition within your current. And I, and I know there's a program or some type of design here that we're not seeing, but have those considerations already kind of all gone through.
Yeah, but this exists, I believe it was a two-bedroom house. The goal was, it's a young family that's bought it, that has children, and they wanted to create it up to a four-bedroom house.
Correct.
They could go off the back, make a bedroom, but then you would have a garage. Are you willing to have a garage on the back?
So, you've got a plan in front, place to put a detached garage.
Yeah.
Well, and here's, we can, so there, there are sort of two options here. We put up through a vote, it may or may not pass. We can continue it to see if you guys can come up with something where, you know, perhaps there is no change or little change to the existing front yard setback. Which I think would satisfy a number of people on board. And, and, and then if that is not a viable option, right? And you present that and say, this is not a viable option. I'll put this up, you know, we present it to the board as this and say, this is it. And then you guys, if we vote it down and take an opinion.
Sure. Could I request a continuance to the next meeting?
You, yes, you may.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Next, have we fixed Mr. Meravito's problem? Paul, can you, have you been, have you been able to dial in on the phone?
Paul has not dialed in.
So, we will, so the second application has been continued. We will move to the third application and get back to Mr. Meravito when the technology allows us to. On the third application of Joseph Hannan of Atlantic Coast Engineering LLC, 88 Front Street Suite, Suite 20B, Citrus, Mass., requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, 76, and Sections 8, 10, and 6, 10 of the Citrus zoning bylaw and/or for any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of the single-family dwelling on a pre-existing nonconforming lot located at 2 Rebecca Road, Citrus. Do we have, let's see. Do we have anyone on that application here?
Good evening, Jed Hannah with Atlantic Coast Engineering. Can you hear me okay?
Thank you, yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay, so, thank you for allowing us to file this application, the special permit. Again, Joseph Hannan, registered engineer with Atlantic Coast Engineering. This is to Rebecca Road. We're speak, seeking a special permit under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Sections 8, 10, and 6, 10 of the Citrus zoning bylaw. This is a pre-existing home, very close to the Lighthouse, basically at the intersection of Lighthouse Road and Rebecca Road. There's several pre-existing nonconformities. Do you guys want me to pull up the site plan or do you have it in front of you?
Uh, we have it, but you can, you can pull it up if you want.
I have it.
The question that I have that will be, I think, helpful to us, these would be some of the measurements that you have made, is that you've taken a measurement, so the deck is covered, uncovered. What are we doing with the deck? Because because if it is in fact a deck, Bob, please correct me if I'm wrong, I just wanna get these measures right.
Yeah.
Is that he's got your proposed measurements on both the left side setback and the rear setback. Are measurements from the deck, which, my understanding, please, please, please correct me if I'm wrong, is not how we do our measurements. We do it to the underlying structure. Uh, that, correct?
Yeah.
It's okay.
So, I'll confuse the issue even further.
Yeah.
As I view this lot, there are two front yards, one side yard, and no rear yard.
Yeah. Well, that's the other problem. But, but I was gonna get, I was gonna try and get the measurements right first.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And then, and then we can do a calculation.
The deck does have it, it's fully covered if I'm looking at it.
Yes, correct. So, it's a fully covered deck, but it's, it's.
That is correct.
So, would you, so it comes into play if it's a fully covered deck?
That's right.
Yeah, Bob, it's a, it's a fully covered deck. So, we're in a situation where whether these are two front yards or whatever, we have pretty much, as far as setbacks go, this is a bit of a situation. So, you're proposing to what you call the front to improve the setback slightly.
That's correct.
And then with respect to what is, you're calling the right side, improve that setback slightly, right? Because that's in the street as far as.
Correct.
Reading the plans, right?
Correct.
So, we're, we're improving two setbacks. And we are intensifying two other setbacks on what you're calling the left side and the rear. Correct? We're going from 9.3 feet to 6.2 feet to a covered deck. And the rear is going from 1.7 feet to 0 feet. Right?
That's correct.
If I'm reading this correctly, and this is just, I'm just trying to do the math. Okay. Well, that puts us in a similar situation, in the best case.
Gorgeous, yeah.
Well, I, the required, I, I'm at some point looking at the required setback. The, the lot is pretty much not big enough to meet any required setbacks.
Agreed.
So, so that's, I, I'm sort of looking at this in light of the existing setbacks, right? And trying, I mean, everything here is undersized, right? What, the width, the frontage, and the lot area are all undersized and don't meet the the bylaws, right? The, the house is built to basically cover basically the imperium, and in fact, it's built into the street. Okay.
If I could just provide one additional comment.
Please.
The, if you look at the zoning. The, if you look at the zoning chart, we are decreasing the overall lot coverage percentage by approximately 7%. So the existing is 1,584 square feet, and we're proposing 1,478 square feet. So it ends up being a net decrease of 7%, so we're trying to pull in as many of the nonconformities as we can, but also trying to build a similar-sized structure.
Understood. Yeah, you're not looking to build a McMansion on it. We understand that.
Okay. Joe, which footings are the new footings?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Which, you said there were three new footings. Which, can you identify them anyway? I'm just trying to orient.
Yes, absolutely. Let me just compare the existing to the proposed.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, it looks like they're inside.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I was looking for a footprint.
So the new footings, there's, there's two that go down the center line lengthwise, additional. And then one additional to the west. And that's largely because of, you know, wind loading and.
Right.
I was just trying to see if you were changing the, call it the foundation footprint.
The overall length and width is not changing on the foundation.
How long is that sleeve or how tall?
The sleeve is four feet.
So it's not changing the footprint?
Well, he asked that, right? Like, he's giving up, he's giving up for footing.
Well, yes, it's not one of those.
He's standing down.
But he's shifting it.
Some of the three.
Right.
But it's right at the road.
Right. Well, look, I think, look, we have to be consistent here, right? So it's huge that it's just coming out of the road. Right, that's, I think, that's a very good thing. And the front is, you know, a little bit improved, it's fundamentally the same, right? Where we have the issue, right, is you're increasing, you're effectively increasing to nonconformities, right? You're substantially increasing.
You're creating a nonconformity.
Well, they're all nonconforming, right?
Right, but the left side wasn't.
Right, the left, that's right. You're creating and do not perform, I'm sorry, you're, right? You're creating and do not conforming. You're, and you're intensifying an existing nonconformity. Right? Which compared to our last situation is arguably two problems.
Yeah. We need to come out of the road.
So we need to come out of the road, right? We have, we have, right? We have some trade-offs here. So let me ask, is there any way to do this?
Most of the stuff right here, right here.
Yeah, well, the question is, is there any way to do this with not creating a new nonconformity on the left side? Right? And more or less or minimizing the change in the rear? Can you keep it at sort of 1.7 in the rear and closer to, you know, eight feet on the left side? Or whatever we're calling the left side here? I'm looking, I'm just looking at the numbers. I don't know.
You're not looking at the drawing.
I, I.
Look at the drawing. The numbers don't line up. That's what I'm, that was my original question. That's what I'm having a problem with. He's not changing the footprint.
So he's just.
We're starting.
We are proposing, we are proposing and existing.
Right.
There's a couple of changes that are so minor that they're probably errors in, you know, measurements.
Right.
They're 9.2 as opposed to 9.3. You know, top of the inch.
Right. That was the wind blowing, they were layers on it.
It seems to me, on that property line, which I would call the sideline.
Rebecca Road Lighthouse?
No, the one that's neither. It's not, it has no street front.
C note seven?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
If you didn't cover that deck, you pretty much have covered, have, have.
Right.
Acquitted yourself, says that, in that direction. And then I don't see anything else that's changed substantially from what's there now.
That's what I was getting.
Unless it's an improvement, you know, getting it out of the street.
Well, they're trying to improve it and then, yeah, and then what he calls the rear that's 1.7 to sort of zero up against the line. It's sort of up against the line.
If the rear is what we're looking at, is Lighthouse Road.
Yeah.
Then I see 1.8 feet.
Right.
And what will I see? Because the second level. I bet you, up against the line is that there.
Second level covered deck.
Second level. And if that, there's a deck in which the boards are spaced out and the water could drip through, then it's not part of the house, and you wouldn't measure it from there.
Well, but if it's, you think it's covered?
Well, that's it. You gotta, you gotta figure out whether, architecturally, you gotta think about, you know, what's the, what's the implication and the loss of not having the coverage?
Right. Right, so I think we're all saying the same thing. We're reading these the same way, which is what's causing sort of our issue with this is that both decks are covered. Because if you could uncover those two decks, then this thing becomes, I don't know, I don't want to say it's conformant, it's not, but it doesn't change, it doesn't change anything about.
Mr. Hannah, are you following this?
I am following it, and if I could provide one comment, and I'd be happy to share the architecturals. Although the first floor deck is covered on one side, not on the staircase side, which is Rebecca Road, but on the second level, it's not covered. So the setback, it actually should be brought in three feet, you know, if we're measuring at the, at the grade, the existing grade at the ground level. And that's why we put that asterisk where it says, we show the asterisk of zero. It actually, it really should show three feet. So it's actually an improvement there, if you consider the asterisk, because it's an uncovered deck, so the setback's really three feet further in.
You don't have any elevations you can show us, do you?
I do. I have the architecturals I could share, if I could share my screen.
Let me share.
So how do these? And this is what I'm trying to get to, right? Which is, are these covered decks? Is it really zero? Is it really 6.2?
If you can pull this up.
Because.
Can everybody see that okay?
Got it.
Okay. So I can zoom in a little bit. In that bottom-left elevation view, on that bottom-left elevation view, you can see the second-level deck. And you can see that's not covered. Whereas in the bottom-right here, you can see on one side it is covered, and the other side, it's not covered.
So the left side of that view, Jeff, is which street or towards where? The left side of the view that you were just on, the right.
Okay, that view there is looking, let me go back to the site plan.
It's, it's the.
Okay, so the, the, the long, if you look at the site plan, which I can share that also, the 25-foot-long porch faces out towards the intersection of Rebecca and Lighthouse.
Yeah, right.
And that's covered. The smaller porch in the back, 12-foot-long by three and a half, is not covered. That's just simply a staircase with a, you know, very small porch, if that makes sense.
And what about the porch on the right in this view?
The porch, the porch on the right. Are you looking at the architecturals?
Yeah, I was looking at the site plan too.
Okay, the porch.
The porch that faces out of Lighthouse.
Understood, yep. So that porch is, as shown on the site plan, it's the proposed second-level deck above. There is no deck below. So the table, the asterisk explains it, but it's misleading because it looks like we're creating more of a nonconformity at zero feet, when in actuality it's three feet, so I can adjust that.
Yes, so let me draw, let me draw this without his permission.
No, please, absolutely. This is what I tried to get to from the beginning. Absolutely, go.
The porch facing the intersection, the 25-foot porch, labeled porch below is overhired by the house itself. It's not simply a roof over the porch. Second floor of the house forms the roof, if you will, over that porch. Right, the left-hand part of that view that we're looking at right now.
Right.
So I don't think that has any setback issues beyond what the existing house, you know, presents.
Right, that's what it presents as too.
So that doesn't seem critical to me. The fact that the porch on the other side is not covered, I think that's important, and the measurement should definitely be the house wall, disregarding the deck entirely.
9.2 or 9.3.
Right. And the porch facing Rebecca, or the deck facing Rebecca. Show us that elevation if you would.
Sure.
That 0.8, exactly. So that was, that 0.7, 1.8 is the same.
Okay, that, that elevation is right there in the top-left. I mean, we kept it as minimal as we can in terms of the width. And that's it right there.
So is this looking in for Rebecca?
That's right.
Because I don't see a second level of that.
Because it's, the second-level deck's on the backside.
We need the cell, the cell blast elevation?
So I guess that's.
Yeah, so the, right, you can see it there on the.
I see what you're saying, right?
Yep.
It's projecting, it's cantilevered off any structure.
Exactly.
So that's, that's not to be regarded in terms of setback. There's, there's no reason not to measure just to the house wall or the face of, you know, the support girders, whichever. So, yeah, I think you're okay there.
So is that?
That zero setback is not really a zero setback. That's whatever the house is, which is 1.8.
1.7, 1.8 is whatever it was. So the question, so we have one setback. What he calls a front setback is fundamentally unchanged, where it's improved slightly. We have the right-side setback, which goes from Big Industry to. Yeah.
Zero.
To zero, and we agree that that's what that is.
Yeah.
Right? And we have the rear setback that goes from, that stays more or less the same. 1.7, 1.8. So that leaves the, what he's turning the left-side setback that goes from 9.3.
No, I think it stays 9.3.
Well, that's, I'm saying, the 9.3 has changed, not the 6.2, right?
It's a 9.3.
It's again 9.3, right?
Because it's 6.2, it's 3.5.
Well, that's it.
Right.
It's this setback.
It's that plus that.
Well, it's this setback, and the question is, is this covered? Is this piece covered? And I think, I think we came to the conclusion. So Bob, do you see a 9.6.25 actual setback, or is it really 9.2?
It's really 9.2.
Okay, that's what I was, so really, what we've done.
Or perhaps, oh, I take it back. No, because the deck-facing Lighthouse Road is not to be counted as part of, part of the envelope of the house itself. I, you know, I'd have to have the architecturals in front of me to really understand what's going on there, because it looks like it's cantilevered way beyond where you'd be able to feasibly cantilever.
Yeah, so again, where I'm, I'm just looking sort of at the numbers right now. It looks like fundamentally, we have one improvement, two situations where it's unchanged. And then the question is, have we gone from something that's conforming to nonconforming on one side? Or is it fundamentally the same?
Fundamentally the same.
Right, and I'm, that's what I'm serious.
You mean the left side is the same, right?
It's the same, yes.
It is.
So.
If I'm reading this correctly.
Well, that's, right, that's what we're trying to get at, right? Our, the real measurement, right? So if that's the case, right? We've, you, you've eliminated, well, you've reduced a nonconformity, right? And then you've introduced no new nonconformity, right? Do we agree that that's what's happening here?
Yes.
Okay. Again, different than the last situation now, as opposed to the same or worse. So it's good.
Well, and it's also, like, it doesn't match the plan, so I think we need to make sure that this is correct.
Yeah, yeah.
If we're approving this plan.
Yes, so.
So maybe might need.
So I, I think what we would like to see is updated measurements that are accurate as with respect to the actual set-offs, as opposed to cover, you know, potentially uncovered debt.
Absolutely. So.
I think, I think we're predisposed now that we understand what's happening here, is that really it is, there is nothing that's getting worse. At least one thing is getting better. So I think we're positive, and you're not increasing the overall footprint of the, of the, of the, of the house. I think we're not gonna, I think we'd like to see accurate plans. And we would suggest that we continue this to next time so that we can have accurate plans, but that, with accurate measurements, the plans I think are accurate. But we're not looking for a big discussion next time because I think we've achieved what we wanted to achieve with that. Does that make sense? Because again, I can't, to your point, right?
Yeah, we should have clean plans.
Let's have clean plans. Bob, does that make sense to you conceptually?
Yes.
So I'll take comments from the audience at this point. I'd say the audience from the room. Any comments from the room? No? Any comments from anybody online?
If Mr. Hannah could stop sharing his screen.
Yeah, okay. I think that's fine. All right, so do you want to continue, sir?
Absolutely. I mean, the only suggestion I'd perhaps make, if the board's amenable to it, is, you know, subject to receipt of the revised table to reflect the dimensions and the actual setbacks. We'd prefer, I'm sure the client would prefer, if we could, if we could vote, but at the same time, I respect your opinions.
Yeah.
We'll get you what you need.
Yeah, because we always, you know, we want to have the actual plans. And again, not that anything untoward would happen, but if we approve, subject to mystery plans that we have not seen, we have no idea what you're gonna submit. I'm sure you can submit something perfectly fine. But procedurally, I don't think that that makes sense. I don't think, I think you all were in agreement there. So I will, I will take that as a request for continuance. Everybody willing to grant the request for continuance?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so we're gonna continue this the next time. Hopefully, with the revised numbers, this will be super fast, and we can get rid of it quickly.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miravito. Come on down on 27 Pineview Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, we continue the second and third application. Mr. Free MBE is here on the first application. We just wanted to see.
Action for the record, sir. My name is Paul Miravito from Ross Engineering Company. We are through the main street in Orwell, representing the only applicant for the application before the board. The reason for this application is based upon the applicant's filing for accessory drawing. the reason for this application is based upon the applicant's filing for accessory dwelling, a permit from the uh, to, to the planning board, which is expected to be next week. Uh, because the site is not a flood plain, we also filed and received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. The application, um, before you is all relative to the proposed work for the accessory dwelling, which will be inside the existing home.
Right.
Um, the site is located on the, uh, east side of Pine View Drive. It's a forty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty foot square lot. Um, the, the entire lot is lower than elevation sixty, therefore it's, it, it, it is on the town situable flood plain and water ship protection just there. And due to the size of the proposed accessory dwelling, which will be inside the house, as well as a small addition, uh, to the rear of the garage, um, there's a, that constitutes a substantial improvement, which is more than twenty-five percent increase in the gross floor area. That being the case, we're seeking a special permit from Section four seventy point six F of the zoning bylaw um, for the substantial improvement. The other reason we're before you is to seek the finding in a special permit for the proposed increase in the gross floor area of thirty-seven and a half percent. The, uh, non-conforming aspect of the lot, there's only one conforming, uh, I'm sorry, there's only one non-conforming setback or, uh, I'm sorry, um, the width of the, of the house through the rear of the house is only a hundred and sixty-nine point four feet. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the, the existing lot went through the back of the house with a hundred and seventy point one feet. With a proposed addition that will, that will involve or include a living space, the width of the house at the in the same location will be reduced by eight and a half inches to a hundred and sixty-nine point four feet. Uh, we feel that's a very small, uh, in, increase of the non-conformity. It is to the rear of the house, which you wouldn't see from the street, and it's also in the rear area of the house. There, there's some open decks on the back of the house, some of which are going to be enclosed, but behind the garage will be an addition of twenty-three feet and a half by fourteen feet, which will serve as the, um, uh, the portion of the accessory dwelling. There are no grade changes proposed on the lot. I have provided a zoning chart on, on the plan as well, as well as in the application. So with that, everything going on through the application, that's taken forward, thank you, may I out?
Yes, um, and, and it, and it's maybe a misunderstanding on my part. How are we changing the lot width? Well.
It's, it's the lot went through the rear of the house. Right now, we're showing the plan, it's a hundred and seventy point one feet. The requirement's a hundred and seventy-five feet. When, when that house was built, that, that hundred and seventy-five foot setback was obviously violated. But we're proposing to, um, reduce that by eight and a half inches to a hundred and sixty-nine point four feet. And that has to do with the addition that's coming off the back of the garage, the ones that's coming out fourteen feet behind the garage.
Geometric.
Yeah. The problem is that the lot lines are converging on each other. The widest part of the lot is at the street, and the narrowest part is the rear.
But that goes to the set offs. Correct. Could it get narrower?
Yes.
No, I understand that.
But.
It's an issue, it's an issue.
It's not, I don't think it's an issue, because he's building out further, so he's getting closer. That's how I read it, narrower.
Yeah, I penalize him. No, no, but. The area is the area, the frontage is the frontage, the width of the lot is still the width of the lot, how close he is to the various areas.
No, that's what I'm saying. He moved the back of it, he moved the measuring points, and now his, now his width of lot through the back of the house has changed, the measuring point changed, so that's why.
He's in a different location in the lot, which has a different.
But a non-conformity in the lot. But the lot, the lot, the lot width has not changed.
No.
Okay, that's fine, okay. Right. Okay, sorry, these semantics on my part, but. All right, so we have no new non-conformities. We, in fact, we have no non-conformities other than asked to lot width. Right? Which we can't change, because that's the width of the lot.
Right.
Right? The frontage is good, the area is good, everything else is good, right? We have a thirty-seven and a half percent increase in, uh, the square footage, right? Um, that's how I see it, okay. Bob?
Yeah.
Did I read this one correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and even though the width keeps shrinking and expanding.
Uh, yeah, no, there's, there's really no question that this is, that should be.
Yeah, th- this is pretty straightforward. Anything from the room? Anything by people online? No? Excellent. Uh, I will make a motion.
May I comment?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
On the vote to grant a special permit pursuant to chap, uh, Section four seventy dot six F. Um, I'm just going through it, so all the additions are gonna have pier foundations. Um, and no existing drainage will be affected. So you've checked all the boxes, you're gonna conform with everything, correct?
Yes.
So I'm far as a vote to grant a special permit for four seventy dot six F. Do we make a motion to do that separately or rapid?
No, no, it would be, it would be under the request of the group. Right, so, um.
It's, it's.
It's, yeah, and it's in the submission, so, um, and I, I don't see, and now it's mentioned, so I don't see a problem there.
Very good.
So, uh, I will move that, uh, pursuant to the application of Colin J. Beadie and Cinguillie Devine Beadie of Twenty-Seventh Pine View F um, for a special permit in accordance with Section eight ten point two B and four seventy-six point F of the Citriot zoning bylaw uh, to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit by altering a portion of the existing dwelling, constructing two separate one addition, one story addition F F pursuant to the plans by Ross Engineering Company, Grady Consulting, uh, dated, uh, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, with the board's mind that, uh, the uh, that the modifications, uh, to the dwelling, uh, uh, introduce uh, no new non-conformities, and to the extent that, uh, they intensify any existing non-conformities, such existing, uh, such intensification is not substantially marked detrimental to the neighborhood and that the board grant a special permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Granted. You too. On our fourth application, uh, James Kenny, Dynamic Planet LLC, Fifty Thirty-One Bedford Drive, Melton, Florida, uh, to, for a special permit in accordance with NGL forty-eight, Section six, eight ten point two A, uh, of the Citriot zoning bylaw, um, to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at Seven Revere Street, Citriot, Mass, and increasing the gross, gross floor area by more than twenty percent. Do we have anyone here for the applicant?
Yes, I'm Darren Grady from Grady Consulting, here on behalf of, uh, Jim Kenny.
Mr. Grady, good to have you.
Thank you very much. Um, can I bring you through the plan?
Absolutely. Walk us through.
So, uh, we have a structure here, it's seven Revere Street, Revere Street's on the, oh, can I share my screen?
We're following up, yeah.
So we have a, uh, structure here on Re- Revere Street. If you're looking at the plan from the bottom, the South River is on the left-hand side of it. The structure is a building that's within the flood plain, so we're proposing to, uh, raise the building and put a new building on piles, uh, basically, uh, similar footprint. The, um, existing building was built in nineteen oh two and is non-conforming to, um, to side setbacks into the front setback. It conforms to area frontage and lot width. We are proposing to, um, not increase the non-conformity on the, is there any way I can zoom up on these, or if I can share my screen, I could probably bring you through this a little easier?
I'll do it. She'll be able to share now.
I don't see it, hold on. Share screen. Uh, can you see that?
Yes.
Um, so the existing house is, uh, four point one, uh, feet, uh, to the front setback, so, uh, this is a, a covered deck. So there's a, a roof above this and three point nine to the existing deck. Uh, the setback on the right-hand side is three point nine feet. Uh, just to give you a view of what the existing house looks like. Um, this is the left-hand side and the front. Uh, this is the rear. And this is the right-hand side. Uh, the property line is on, the, the fence belongs to the, the, the neighbor. Uh, what we're proposing to do is, uh, put a house on piles here. The, um, this, the footprint square footage is going to increase to six hundred and sixty square feet, and that includes this dark line all the way around here. Except on the first floor, this is going to be a covered porch again, similar to what was existing. Uh, the setbacks are gonna increase from three point nine feet, or actually, we're maintaining a three point nine foot setback, and they're gonna increase from, uh, four point one to four point three here, and three point nine to four point one here. Uh, the deck is also being expanded. Um, as I said previously, we're putting this up on piles, we're gonna raise it, uh, to be conforming with FEMA floodplain standards. Uh, the building height's going to be, uh, thirty-three point three feet, or thirty-three feet, three inches, and, uh, to the midpoint, and thirty-eight feet to the peak from the average ground. Uh, the stepic system here is put in in two thousand and eighteen, is functioning fine, and the Conservation Commission approved this plan, uh, a few weeks ago. Uh, minus, they removed this wall here, uh, and, um, they, they approved it based upon conditioning not building that wall. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question for Bob, but, uh, we, the board has.
Can you remove this wall here?
Show us the wall that.
Can you show me again what they removed?
The wall, the wall that they removed. The, 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 the.
Uh, the wall, this wall here is, that's proposed is being, is not being constructed, because, kind of, to the commission.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Uh, no, any more questions from the board? Uh, I have a question. One, I would welcome your comments, but I have a question to you separate, which is, do they, they're in a water ship protection picture?
Yes.
Uh. Well, they're in a flood plain.
They're in a FEMA flood plain.
In a flood plain.
They're not in the Citriot flood plain.
They're not in the Citriot flood plain.
Right.
Okay, so do they or do they not need four seventy?
No.
Really? No, because they're not in a Citriot.
Current, or, or the water ship protection.
Or water ship protection.
Unrocked, unrocked is none of unrocked in the water ship.
That's what I was trying to understand.
Yeah.
So that checks that box for me. Uh, well, because I was, I'm trying to.
Yep.
Right? Um, questions from here? In the room? No? Questions from anybody on Zoom?
Um, if Mr. Grady could stop sharing his screen.
Mr. Grady, can you unshare your screen or stop sharing so we can see? Thank you, sir. So we can see if there's anyone else interested in speaking on this.
No, there's.
There is not, okay. Uh, anybody wanna make a motion? Okay, here we go again. Um, so the applicant, on the application, James Kenny, Dynamic Planet LLC, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty-eight, Section six, and Section eight ten point two A, the Citriot zoning bylaw, uh, and/or any other relief that the board may grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at Seven Revere Street, and increase the gross, gross floor area by more than forty percent. Uh, I move, uh, the, the pursuant to the site plan, uh, by Grady Consulting, uh, LLC, dated January thirty, twenty twenty-three, uh, that, uh, the board find, uh, that said, proposed, um, raise and reconstruct, uh, does not introduce any new non-conformities, and to, to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such non-conformities are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I approve.
Thank you very much.
Situated for the next. So on our fifth application of Jacqueline Briggs, Sixty-four Vinal Ave, Citriot, Mass, requesting on according to NGL forty-eight, Section six, six, eight, ten, the Citriot zoning bylaws, to allow for the construction of an addition to pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at sixty-four. Vinyl? Vinyl? Vinyl, I mean, how we say it in town. Name.
Thank you, Gregory Morris, Registered Engineer, Morris Engineering, representing the applicant Jacqueline Briggs, who's in the audience for this as well tonight. We're here for a property located at sixty-four Vinal Ave, seeking a special permit per Section eight ten point two of the bylaw, Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six. The property is located in the R-two zoning district, has an existing single-family home built in nineteen fifty-four, approximately eleven hundred and sixty-six square feet. Non-conformities out here, the lot area is non-conforming to twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty square feet, where twenty thousand is required. In the rear yard setback, the existing home is at twenty-five feet from the rear yard versus thirty feet required. The proposal here is to construct a second story over the existing home. In addition to that, off of the right-hand side of the house would be, uh, a small addition in a garage, again, with a second level above those structures. This would bring the total floor area to three thousand, one hundred and fifty-one square feet. It represents a hundred and seventy percent increase. The project does comply with side yard and front yard setbacks. The rear yard setback proposed is in greater compliance, proposed at twenty-five point one versus twenty-five, what exists today. Uh, we feel that construction of a home of the thirty-one, one hundred and fifty-one square feet is in keeping with the neighborhood, um, that the board can issue this, because this does not create any new non-conformities, it does not intensify uh, our proposed work closer than existing non-conformities. Uh, other homes in the district are of similar size, and the single-family home is a lot use, terminal view.
Uh, I have no questions. Any questions from the board on that? Bob? Or missing anything on this one?
No, good for me.
Folks from the room? Anybody online, questions? Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Excellent.
Make a motion that the board approve a special permit finding in accordance with, um, NGL chapter forty-eight, Section six, and Section eight ten, the Citriot zoning bylaw, and/or any. and section eight, ten of the Citrus zoning bylaw and or any relief that the board feels may grant to allow the construction of an addition to preexisting nonconforming single family dwelling located at sixty four Vinyl Avenue in Citrus, as shown on the plan dated eight twenty three. By Morris Engineering, does not intensify any existing nonconformities and such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to surrounding neighborhood.
So, so I would modify that, it doesn't introduce any new nonconformities and does not intensify any existing nonconformities.
Either of those, okay.
Second?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So as to the sixth application, Susan and Michael Whalen, seventy eight Citrus Ave, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL forty A, in section section six and section eight, ten point two of the Citrus zoning bylaw and or any other relief that this board may grant to construct an addition to a preexisting nonconforming single family dwellings located at seventy eight Citrus Ave and increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty versus ten. Hello, name?
Hi, Alyssa Jones, Alyssa Jones Design. I prepared the architectural plans for this proposition and Joseph Wadi Consulting prepared the site plan. And Michael and Susan in the audience.
Well, Susan.
And we are asking the board to allow for the construction of an addition to a preexisting nonconforming single family structure. The existing lot area is nonconforming at let's see here, at six thousand three hundred and fifty six square feet where ten thousand is required. And the existing side setback is nonconforming at five point two feet. Existing structure is only eleven hundred square feet, it's a single story type, three bedrooms, one bathroom home. We've signed a rear bedroom addition, that would also include a bathroom. And on the right side, we're adding a sunroom. And so the total increase of the living space is around five hundred and sixteen square feet, bringing the house up to sixteen hundred square feet. And it's will remain a one story house, we're not increasing the heights and and yeah, we're not, we're hopefully do this project because we're not increasing any nonconformities and I'll have any other questions?
Thank you, board. Questions on this one? All right, Bob, you see anything we should be aware of?
No, relative to how you know, I think I'd want to look at it a little harder and see if it might need a stormwater special permit because of the increase in of impervious.
Yeah. That's
that's not your purview.
You don't have to worry about it or anything, but but I did, I did have the same thought.
It just do the calculation.
Yeah, and you know, we've had calculations, so sometimes we don't know when really arithmetic is the same. So, so we'll, we'll, we'll sit. Okay, anything by the folks in the room? Anything, folks online? Forward. And no commentary? Motion? Do you want to try it one?
I'll run all of that.
Try one more time.
I will make a motion to approve the special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty A, section six section eight, ten of, eight, ten point two of the Citrus zoning bylaw and or any other relief the board may grant to allow the construction of an addition to a preexisting nonconforming single family dwelling located at sixty eight Citrus Ave. What's the date on the plan?
Pursuant to this plan.
The plan dated
By Wadi Consulting.
Wadi Consulting dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Does not create any new nonconformities and to the extent it intensifies any existing nonconformities, such intensification does not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood and that we grant the relief.
Our second. On favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All right, on to our seventh application of Jamie and Melissa Davenport, sixteen Booth Hill Road, Citrus Mass, oh two oh six six, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight section six, section eight, ten point two of the Citrus zoning bylaw and or any other relief that the board may grant to allow for the construction of an addition to a preexisting nonconforming single family dwelling located at sixteen Booth Hill Road, Citrus, and increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent.
Thank you, for the record Gregory Morris, registered engineer, Morris Engineering, representing the property owner JD, Melissa Davenport, JD is with us in the audience tonight. Property is located at sixteen Booth Hill Road, we're seeking a special permit in accordance with section eight, ten point two of the bylaw and Mass General Law, chapter forty eight, section six to allow in addition to their single family home. This is located in the R two zoning district, the existing home being built around nineteen fifty five for the assessors containing three thousand forty four square feet currently. The nonconformities out here, the lot is nonconforming with respect to frontage, existing at ninety where a hundred is the requirement. Lot width at ninety where a hundred and twenty five feet is the requirement. In the left side yard setback, the home exists at four point eight feet versus fifteen feet requirement. Proposal is to construct an addition off the back corner of the house on the plan, I've highlighted it in yellow. It's approximately fourteen by twenty four, it's a two story addition. It brings the total floor area of the home to thirty seven hundred and sixteen square feet, which represents a twenty two percent increase. This does not create any new nonconformities, it's no closer than the existing home. There are homes of similar size in the district.
Attorney, board, preference. Bob?
What's good to me?
The audience in the room, yes, sir?
I'm in a letter and I just wanted to know how what it, what it's going to look like from my yard. I don't know, is it a box? Does it have windows?
Oh, what's?
How tall is it?
Kind of
Follow the existing roof line?
Sure.
Just curious.
Fair, fair question.
Sure, so it's, it's a two story addition, it is in line with the side line of the house. Architectural style clapboard or shingle?
It's the hardy side, it'll be the same as well.
So it'll match the existing house.
Uh, will there be some windows on it?
Windows, yeah.
Will there be like an egress or is there going to be any like doors on that side?
The egress will be on the opposite side.
Okay. And then the other question was, I know it's a nonconforming lot, so does my understanding when you, if something's nonconforming, you have to better it by a certain amount, like if you're too close to the
So okay, yeah, so no, so the lot itself is actually not performing only because it's, it's a little narrow as, not as much frontage, it's a plenty big enough lot. And really, the, he's not changing the lot, we can't really change the lot at all. But where the relevant nonconforming formity is, is four point eight feet off the left side, he is not changing that.
Yeah.
So he has, as a right, allowed you know, he doesn't have to change it, he doesn't have to move his house. Right, and, and, and the addition, where the addition is going, which is in the rear there is plenty of room, he is only required by code to be thirty feet off the rear setback.
Question? Is it fifteen off the side? So is he increasing a nonconformity?
No, it's not moving.
He's adding on in, in, in his nonconformity.
Well, it's not a new nonconformity, it's, it's an existing, he's introducing no, no new nonconformities. The question is, is that an intensification? Right, because along that line, which is like we would do in any of these situations, along that line building something that is within, not performing on S to that side. Right, and it's exactly like every other thing that we look at. Right? So if you're going to build, you build somewhere. So so it's on that, it's on that lot. It's not a new nonconforming. Okay, and he's not, he's not reducing the
Or increasing the nonconformity.
He is, he's not increasing the nonconformity.
By our own wording, he is intensifying an existing nonconformity.
That's
But I would say though, because he's four point eight at that feet.
Yes.
But because it widens the way his laws
Because it's weird, they're still inside fifteen feet. So it's still existing nonconforming, I'm just saying using our own terminology, he is
Right, you can think of it as an intensity, there is not introducing any new nonconforming, right?
No.
No.
Yes, right, and, and
And that's, that's, and the intensification is not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's a modest addition, right?
Yes.
Right, that's, that's, I think we would all agree.
Did that make it as clear as piece directly? Yeah, so the side of the house will just continue back on the same boundary that it's
Correct, for, for some amount, right, not for the whole lot, right, it's for another
Twenty four. And then what in respect to the roof line, is it just continue? Does the roof line continue back from the peak of the house continuing back or is it like a gable?
It's a gable, yeah, it'll be two six pitched intersections, a gable. And the, the peak will come to about four inches below our second story bathroom window, so it will, will not be as tall as the existing.
All right, answer your question, sir. Yes, excellent, that's what we want. Uh, anybody online? You have a phone?
Good, I'm making a motion. A motion to approve a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty A, section six and section eight, ten point two of the Citrus zoning bylaw or any other relief they grant to allow for the construction of an addition to a preexisting nonconforming single family dwelling located at sixteen Booth Hill Road on a plan by Morris Engineering dated two fif, February fifteenth, twenty twenty three, does not create any new nonconformities and to the extent that it intensifies any existing nonconformities such intensification does not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood and that we grant, the board grants the relief.
Our second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
On our eighth and final application for
We're looking at her.
For this evening. Drifway LLC, thereof, Walter B. Sullivan, eighty Washington Street, Building D, Suite Seven, Level Mass, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section six and section eight twenty, nine fifteen point two D, five twenty point six point three four and five twenty point six, point three five of the Citrus zoning bylaw and or any other relief that the board feels may grant to allow for redevelopment I guess, of a three story, well, the development, I should say, of a three story nineteen unit whole family building located at seven New Drifway, right, it's not redevelopment, it's not there yet. Name for the record?
Good evening, for the record, my name is Walter Sullivan, I'm the attorney for the applicant Drifway LLC. The property is located at seven New Drifway. I believe it's a redevelopment project because there's an existing medical building that's been there and abandoned. It was constructed in nineteen sixty seven. The lot is fifty four thousand square feet, right, twenty eight thousand of it is covered by impervious material a building and largely a parking lot that serves the middle of the building. We propose and have been approved by the planning board to construct nineteen units residential in the V C N district which the property is located. And we have received site plan review, a special permit and a stormwater discharge permit from the planning board, orders of condition from the conservation commission. We do need a special permit from this board as it relates to those two sections five twenty. And our argument is building under forty A, section six, that we are decreasing the nonconformity. Although the building will be higher than what is there now, we're reducing the impervious material from twenty eight thousand five hundred and seventy two square feet to sixteen thousand one hundred and ninety square feet. And on page three of our memorandum, we set out in more specificity, the reduction of covered area in the Water Resource Protection District in Zone A, Zone Two and the overlapping zone. So although this is activity on a nonconforming lot and we do not meet the requirements it is less nonconforming because of the reduction of pavement, so we would ask for a finding in that regard and a special permit so that we can move forward with our project, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We're going to have a few questions. Thank you. Board first, I know that there's, there's a sort of existing underlying question is boxing raised or item raised? Whether the relief is the appropriate relief? So I will at this moment, I don't have any Yeah, so so the question is, there, there's some special permit relief that you're requesting. But under section five twenty, Bob please correct me if I, if I don't do this right. Or of the, of the Water Resource Protection District code, right? Part, part of this, so let's go back, part of this the building and most of the site is in Zone A, is that correct?
And yes, that's correct.
Part of the site, which is that just undeveloped area in the back, maybe part of the parking, is in Zone Two.
Yeah, that, that's equivalent, there isn't much undeveloped area and it's just
Right, the parking lot, yeah.
Right, there's, yeah, there's not much here.
There's a little strip, I'm familiar generally, right, there's a little bit that's undeveloped, it's mostly the parking lot.
Right.
We agree. And that's in Zone, some of this is in Zone Two. Now, if we look at five twenty point six right, isn't this technically under five twenty point six prohibited? Quote unquote. And would be something that otherwise we would have to grant a variance for. Right, Bob, am I, am I setting this out correctly or am I not quite standing right?
Good question, I don't, you know, I'm, I, I don't think I have enough legal background to make
Well, I think that's the question.
Between a special permit and a variance.
Right. So the question is, do we need, is the, is the right answer a special permit here? Is it something that we can grant a special permit on or is it something? It's, I mean, it's a good question, or is it something that we need a variance on because of the nature? And I think it's, there's other things that are clearly within you know, purview of special permit. But I think that's the question.
So I, I think the board is aware that the town planner directed a memorandum to the board and she cited precedent by this board from two thousand eighteen where a five twenty point six special permit was granted on a similar project at fourteen sixteen Old Country Way.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting you have to follow it, but I think it's persuasive.
That's an argument, right, and, and, and I, and I, I'm trying to understand again, this won't necessarily impact the ultimate relief. But we want to be on the right side of this, right, because it's it's a big project, everybody's weighed in on it, right? We want to be on the right side of it, so we're trying to figure out whether it's variance or a special whether it's a variance or a special permit. And. Well, we could screen that. Not, um. Um, variations.
So why wouldn't it be a special permit?
Well, it's a, arguably, right, there's impermissible activity. Right? So for example, I, I would take something random, right, uh, storage of commercial fertilizer. That's not what's happening here, we understand that. But in a Water Research Protection District, right, that's not, you know. Some of them are, in some areas it's permitted, some ones not, right? Zone A versus Zone Two, right? What can you do? So. And you would need a variance.
You might wanna look on page forty-six at section after this, the little old page.
Yep. What? The dimensional regulations?
Right. It's not directly there in uh five twenty point six table, but order of variance is used in that paragraph.
Right. In the order of minimized erosion, long-dimensional requirements, okay? Order appeals may grant a variance from any regulation or percentage set forth in this paragraph. Right? For locations outside of Zone A or Zone Two.
Yeah, I guess I, I didn't read that as being the only way you could grant relief, I think, again.
Well, that's what we're trying to.
Yeah, no, and, and, I also struggled with it, this board made note, this is my second filing, and my first one was variance from the alternative special permit.
Right.
Um, and speaking with the town planner, she had a more um positive view as to the manner in which this should, should be sought. And I, and she convinced me, I mean, I think it's a finding, we can't ignore what's there. So I think that's where it gets us into a forty-eight, section six finding, that we are making it less non-conform. So I think, I think that's, and I think that's where the board went back in two thousand eighteen on a similar file.
Because it's not a new imper- quote-unquote impermissible activity.
Right, it's already there.
It's al- it is what it is, and this is a substantial improvement to the problematic situation.
For the past eighteen months, the planning board and the applicant have called this the most complicated lot in the town.
Sure.
Yeah, it is.
It, 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 it.
Absolutely.
It has been a challenge, and uh this was sort of the last piece, and I understand you folks haven't been involved, but.
No.
I, I, I think it is a forty-eight, section six finding, and I, and the reason being is because it exists. And we are removing a lot of the uh offending uh non-conforming, and, and less, and lessening is uh, we're not intensifying, we're making it better.
Right. Alright, so, you choose.
And I think forty-eight, section six really deals with it more uniquely than a variance would, because, you know, it, it's, the board makes a finding simply that the alteration is less of an intensification than what exists, so. For me, I think that's why it's not a variance. But I certainly understand the question.
Yeah.
Uh, for the classless experience, give us a kind of special finding of variance, what is the variance?
Oh, there, I will review the variance.
There we go.
If you would like me to re- I have it right here, right? Um, so, uh. How was it compared? Okay, so you could grant upon uh a variance from the terms of the applicable zoning ordinance or bylaw where such permit granting authority specifically fines, you have to find that owing to circumstances related to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant, and that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance. Or by law. Right, except where the ordinance is a biological express with permit variances for use. No variance may authorize a use or activity not otherwise permitted in the district in which the land or structure is located, provided however that such variance is properly granted part of the chapter first nineteen seventy-six, but limited in time may be extended on the same terms and conditions that were in fact a variance. So, again, I don't know, I just wanna get it right. Because I, I agree with you, having reviewed the packet, seen what you guys are doing. Um, it, again, with respect to the big problem, which is Water Research Protection, et cetera, right, that's, we're over it. Uh, location of the lot, uh, you guys are making a lot of substantial improvements that I think um, will protect the watershed. Okay, that's how I read it, um, and I think it's true.
Yeah.
So that's not really the issue. Um, I don't think we're going to, you know, whatever we do here, it's not to put a bunch of conditions, additional conditions on, um, whatever improvements you guys are gonna make to the property to, to uh protect the watershed. Um, so. That's the question. And I'm just trying to think through.
Just a few minutes. And, uh. Um, just quickly placing over that, not being a lawyer, I almost think a variance applies. And, and qualify for it.
Well, yeah, I, again, I didn't, I prefaced this, but I don't know that, that we're not willing to grant you the, the relief, right, the, effectively, the permit. Um, it's really, and here it's almost form over substance, I think. Um, I think we are positively disposed to this application, and I, and, and my only concern would be that we don't give you the relief that you need.
Well, do you have a leave definition or a legal difference between the two? Walter, do you?
Sorry, Chris, I don't.
Well, I, 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 I think a special permit of, uh, under forty-eight, section six is a less regular standard.
Oh, absolutely.
Now, having said that, I think this lot actually qualifies for a variance as well. Uh, but, uh, having pondered over this, and again, struggled with it like board, and I've spent a lot more time, I still, I still remain convinced that it's a finding for a special permit. Um, and I think what, where I, uh, why I land there is because we are taking something that's existing, this is a redevelopment of an existing non-conforming structure and work that has been done on the lot. And I think that's what really makes it a forty-eight, section six finding, that's my.
Okay. Bob, I would say the planning board and to a, a degree also the conservation commission, as I understand their process and conclusions gave great weight to the fact that this lot was previously developed.
Oh, absolutely.
And that this new development is going to decrease the impact um, of what's there now. Uh, and I think, if I, again, if I understand particularly in planning, how the conversation went, they felt that the special permit would be more appropriate because of the pre-existing nature of the development.
Right.
Um, as being changed by the students.
Right, and they.
It sounds awful, but it's, it's not as though you were developing a lot that, that.
Was previously undeveloped.
Was previously undeveloped.
Right, and, 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 and to not allow it to be developed would, would provide a cannot hardship to a party, right? Where you, you would grant, that's a sort of a more traditional variance situation, it's like, I wanna do something, you don't give you a variance, I can do nothing with this.
I mean, there are so many overlapping zones, uh, situations on this lot that were not previously developed, and somebody wanted to come along and do a project.
You could build it.
Whatever.
Then, then you probably wouldn't need a variance.
Yeah, you, you. That's probably right.
And that would probably hinge on the fact that the lot is unique.
That's right.
Because of all of those, you know, impacts on various zones and that sort of thing.
Right.
And that, in my mind, is, is the reason you look at a, at a variance for a unique situation, whereas this is somewhat different than that.
Right.
Understood.
Alright, um.
So it's not that we're, it's not that we're arguing any of the details here, jump through all of the hoops.
Oh, I, yeah, I do this, I got to this twice, I think this is, this is gonna be a.
Yeah, you jumped all hoops, we're just starting with what to call.
Well, and, you know, it does has, arguably, it has implications. Um, for the implications? Depends on who might wanna challenge it. And those, you know, it just has implications. Um, it does, not necessarily for, immediately for Mr. Solomon's client, right, it could be downstream. Um, how about, I will make a motion. I will move this along. Um. I will make a motion that we grant the special permit, a special permit in accordance with MGL chapter forty-eight, section six, and sections eight twenty, nine fifty point two D, five twenty point six three four, and five twenty point six three five of the Citrus zoning bylaw, uh, to allow for the redevelopment of, of this property and the construction of a three-story. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I apologize. Is there any public comment? No, and thank you, and you stopped me because I was looking at the room and there's nobody here. Any public comment on this? I apologize. Anybody wanna comment on it?
I mean, I agree that it's a special permit, it definitely, I think it's a special permit.
So.
And that was our discussion, but there may be comments of.
No, and you, you are absolutely, you are absolutely correct, and I, I, again, there was no one in the room.
So if you wanna take a pulse of like, do we think it's a special permit?
I think.
I think it's a special permit, but I think there could be other comments.
I'm not playing a lawyer, I, you know, not knowing, you know, what the implications could be.
I just pretend to be a lawyer, and I think it's a special permit.
Okay, so.
I'd like to continue.
So, so I will continue that, uh, of the Citrus, and any other, uh, to allow for the redevelopment of a three-story nineteen-unit multi-family building, there's no other public comment?
Oh, no comment.
No, she said no.
Oh, okay.
After you.
Alright.
Properly.
Alright.
Indicated that I hadn't asked a public comment, and I apologize for it.
This, this zoning officer has a comment. Yes, oh, just one other.
Sure.
Just to make sure we touch everything possible base. Part of the lots in the, um, what is this, floodplain and watershed protection district, not the building, part of the lot.
Yep.
So, uh, I think we, it needs, perhaps, really, under four seventy point six F. And that actually helps your special, group's, group's of a, of a special permit, right, cause that's what's referenced in that section.
That's very clear.
I actually wanna add four seventy.
Solomon, are you? Can you step up a question?
I will. I was starting, I almost had a stop. That's, thank you, Doc, that's, I think, absolutely.
Are you, are you good with the addition of four seventy?
I am, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure that I, yes.
No, 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 and it's fine, I didn't know if you were looking, anyone interrupted.
I am, no, thank you, I am, thank you.
Alright, so we will do this one more time. Four seventy point six, point. Point six F.
Yeah.
There we go.
Alright, uh, so we will restart that motion. Uh, on the application of Driftway LLC, uh, care of, uh, Walter B. Sullivan, eighty Washington Street, Building B, Suite Seven, Normal Mass, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty-eight, section six, and sections at eight twenty, nine fifty point two D, five twenty point six three four, five twenty point six three five, and four seventy point six F of the Citrus zoning bylaw, and, and whatever other relief that we may grant, but we're not granting any other relief, uh, to allow for the redevelopment of seven new Driftway properties and the destruction of a three-story nineteen-unit multi-family building uh pursuant to, what's our plan, wasn't, this. So pursuant to the plan, uh, submitted by the potentially engineering group, most recently dated and endorsed, one twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, that the requisite relief may be granted, that the proposed redevelopment creates no new non-conformities, and to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. All those in favor? A second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Solomon, will you take a stab?
I'm drafting, I'm, I'm.
This, this decision.
I, I, I thank the board for, uh.
No, and, and again, we, uh, look, we were not, we understand the request, we understand what you're trying to accomplish, and we, I think, as a group, think is a good thing. Yep. Um, and will be beneficial for a number of different reasons. We were just trying to figure out the appropriate, uh, grant. Um, with that, do you need to give any other business as you may?
Uh, February minutes.
Uh, I move that we approve at February minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
February minutes approved. With that, we will adjourn the, uh, the March zoning board's appeal.